Would everyone please take their seat? Public service announcement before we start this meeting. In case of an emergency, could everyone please exit the chamber using the right or left doorway and go down the stairs, proceed to the first floor doors and exit the building? Anyone wishing to speak at the public speaking portion of the meeting? We have a sign up sheet at the podium. You could enter your name into that. Okay, I would like to call this meeting of the Kingston Common Council Tuesday, May 1st, 7:32. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you, please be seated. Please have roll call.
Alderman Ventura Morel.
Here.
Alderman Coop.
Here.
Alderman Scott Childress.
Here.
Alderman Worthington.
Here.
Alderman Carey.
Excused.
Alderman Davis.
Here.
Alderman O'Reilly.
Here.
Alderman Chabot.
Here.
Alderman Shaw.
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum, and now declare this meeting duly open. Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting and approve same?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are adopted, eight zero. Could I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the general bills?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's adopted, eight zero. We will now enter into the public speaking portion of the meeting. We have set aside a thirty minute allotment time for this purpose. Please give your name and address at the podium and direct your comments to the council chair.
Mary Ann Parker?
My name is Mary Ann Parker, and I live at 14 Belvedere Street in Kingston, New York. I'm here tonight because I've been trying for the past two weeks to find out who's responsible for the city lights in the city of Kingston. I recently found out that Central Hudson no longer takes care of it, and the city of Kingston now takes care of it. We've had our streetlights on Downstreet out for three weeks, from Downstreet to Tremper Avenue. It's a through street, and everybody travels it. Our streetlights are all out. It's pitch black and dark over there. I think you've all read the paper, and you know that on the very next street, which is Elmandorf Street, there was a shooting at one o'clock in the afternoon. I had called Chief Tinty that morning to tell him there was going to be some problems because there are a lot of people traveling through there, more so than ever at night because of us not having any streetlights over there. So I said, "What can I do about it?" And he said, "Well, just call city officials," you know, "and they're responsible for streetlights." Okay? That's how I found out about it. When I ran for office, I ran, my first issue on my ballot for running was public safety, the public safety of the people, the constituency of the city of Kingston. I'm here tonight to urge you all to look into why these streetlights are not being fixed. I called DPW, they keep telling me I'm on the list, just like everybody else. We're all on the list. But, you know yourself, when you walk through Midtown Kingston late at night, just like the whole city is basically the same, you could be in a bar uptown and get mugged. You can be here, you can be there. But what I'm saying is, people do walk the city streets late at night. And a few of them had a few drinks, and a few of them didn't, or some of them are just coming in from a day's hard day's work. They don't deserve to be mugged, and I'm very concerned that that's what's going to happen because there's more chatter now at night with the streetlights being out than there ever was before. So I'm here tonight basically to say to you, if there's anything you as a council can do to find out about the public safety of the people of the city of Kingston and address the streetlights, I would really appreciate it. Because we have a lot of elderly people, we have a lot of people who come from family Woodstock with small children. I don't want to see anything happen to them. The other day, we had two go-karts flying through the neighborhood. Just told them, "Get out of the road." I said, "I'm nobody." But when they come around the corners, they don't stop. Where Downs and Belvedere meet, and they come flying around that corner? If a kid on a go-kart, or anybody on a go-kart gets hit, it's a liability. It's a liability we don't need. So I'm here tonight to say, if you could look into that, I would truly appreciate it because the public safety of the people of the city of Kingston is why we're all here. And that's why we ran for office, to protect the people who we represent, the constituency of the city of Kingston. And the other thing I'm here to talk about is, I was here about RUCO and the infrastructure at RUCO. I've been to several meetings, I'm still concerned about it. I think it's putting Band-Aids on Band-Aids on Band-Aids, and we're going to have problems. The pockets of poverty area is covered, Flatbush Avenue is now where it's going now. I'm being told it's going over to Lincoln Street. I have relatives all over that area. I'm concerned for the people. And bottom line is, when Kevin O'Connor was here, he said that the state was going to take care of the services. Well, I went back to my archives of the Tubby's, and I found the charter, the very first charter of the city of Kingston. The Alms House used to be the poorhouse, and basically, all the responsibility and services were covered by the city of Kingston. Now, I got in a lot of trouble when I talked about the county and the safety net and the cost that was occurring on the taxpaying residents. Everybody probably read that in the paper. Why I'm here too is to tell you to make sure you look into who is going to cover the cost of the services at the Alms House. Because the taxpaying residents of the city of Kingston were ripped off once by the county. And I'm in fear that maybe the same thing is going to end up happening again, and the taxpaying residents of the city of Kingston are the ones who are going to incur expense with the Alms House. I hope that's not the case. But I went to Kevin Cahill's office, and I asked them, "Please look into this and reassure me that the state is going to pay for the services." I don't think they are, but I would love to come and say, "I apologize, and I'm wrong about this." Only because, when I moved here and lived here all my life, I decided there was one thing I was going to do that, and that was, living over by the Kingston Area Library, I wanted to always thank the people of the city of Kingston for keeping their doors opening and for letting us kids grow up in the Midtown Kingston area. And my commitment is still the same. My heart is in the city of Kingston, especially the Midtown area. It's full of diversity, it's full of many, many, many different languages, attitudes. But when you get to know the people, the bottom line is, they're good people. We're not those people. We're committed people to the community which we live in, and the reason we're here is because we want to be here. Recently, I'll tell you, I'll give you an example, Frazier Frisberg, I don't know how many of you know him, he ran for office in Ward 4. His wife died, Dale, suddenly. And that's the other thing, if you haven't closed a meeting in her memory, she lived there for fifty years on Elmandorf Street. Frazier's now down in Tennessee looking for a place, and he said he'll sell the house on Elmandorf, furniture included, because he doesn't want to live there any longer without his wife. And my husband told me the same thing. "When you die, I'm getting out of here, I'm not staying here." But it's a commitment, you make a commitment. My heart is here, it always will be. I'll be here ninety, a hundred with a cane if I have to. Because the people of the city of Kingston were very good to me, and I'm very thankful to have had the roots to grow into that given community. The Kingston Area Library, the Kingston Boys and Girls Club, wonderful memories. So I'm just here to say to you, not to be, you know, long-winded and everything, but when you look into things, public safety, sidewalks, the quality of life in Midtown, being able to walk the city streets at night. A lot of people tell me, "I was walking over there." They don't feel comfortable walking in Midtown at night. There's a lot of noises. There was a gentleman here who talked about RUCO and the fear. We've always lived there, we've never had fear. But now, I'm committed so much that I'm going to get in trouble because the police told me I will get in trouble if I use my baseball bat, which I have by my front door, or my baseball bat, which I have by my back door. Why do I have them? I have them because if anybody tries to come into my home, that's my chosen weapon. Will it get me in trouble? He said yes, but I said it better not get me in trouble in my own given home. So I'm asking you, after living here my entire life and spending forty-two years of that right on Belvedere Street, I want to know, if you're committed to the constituency of the Midtown area, then make sure our streetlights are working and that our children feel safe. And it's a school bus stop on Downstreet, too. Right now, summertime's coming, so it doesn't really matter, but in the wintertime, it would be really dark had that happened. If you're going to redo streetlights, redo them, I don't care. But please, take into consideration the public safety of the people of the city of Kingston because we're all getting old. I'll be seventy next month. I don't feel seventy, but guess what, I am. But I'm committed, and I just want, you know, from the bottom of my heart, the constituency of the city of Kingston deserves to be shown the same respect as anywhere else in the city of Kingston. And with the homeless shelter being there, and with all of the little babies, I saw them in strollers today, it's a beautiful day out walking. They need to know they're safe. And Tinty did tell me, Police Chief Tinty, I shouldn't be disrespectful, told me that he would, you know, send cars through there once in a while to help out, and I appreciate that. But if there's a way that we can get some of these streetlights addressed, I'd be glad to have one or two. But it's from Broadway to Tremper Avenue, or a place which is where the body was thrown over the Elmandorf Street hump. The county put in a light, but that streetlight is out, too. So when they come from the plaza up through there, there's no streetlight on that street either. So thank you for your time and consideration, and please look into the matter for the safety of everyone in the Midtown area. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Joseph DeFalco.
Joseph DeFalco, 66 Glen Street. Imagine my curiosity when I read in the daily papers headlines on Sunday, the 29th. "Mayor taunts sustainability reports," which dealt in highlights and provides an overview of innovative projects that would make the city more sustainable. As stewards of the city, you should question how an environmental educator and sustainability coordinator can be responsible for thirteen grants, engage in environmental education opportunities, and be responsible for developing and planning public outreach events, as well as attending meetings and workshops and conferences. I would suggest, in order to be done, on how much time is devoted to fulfill these requirements of these grants, percentages of time allocated for each one. If this can't be done internally, you can call the State Controller's office. You know, the State Controller came here once before and identified theft, and you know what the mayor did with that. I find it also interesting, after months of stating that the positions belong in the schools district, okay, because they are educators, that this report published is not mere coincidence, okay? And the report is flawed because it refers to recycling solid waste management efforts. We know the Ulster County Resource Recovery Agencies discontinue our single-stream recycling at the end of the year, will, can expect to increase our collection fees, okay? We may very well have to forfeit our recycling educators, okay, as well as this another reason why magically, in 2017, the sustainability report appears as justification for these positions. Now, I'm going to answer a question that I was asked last night about losing money on grants that I couldn't answer. Well, I'll answer them tonight. The birches, the Yasmin Towers, the Governor Clinton, the boutique hotels, Woolworths, we lost sales tax, registration fees, and a great deal of money. So when he said last night, "We didn't lose anything," and he asked me for an example, I'm giving you the example tonight. There's not one, but four. There's Woolworths, too, which that, we haven't gotten anything out of that yet. Another thing, too, is, this administration is the most closed-door, backdoor dealing, corrupt administration that this city has seen in thirty years. The council takes people into illegal, closed-door meetings, discusses finances, tells council members how to vote. Charges missing from office that are filed. There should be an investigation, okay? And I'm not going to go away, and I thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Ellen DeFalco.
Ellen DeFalco, 66 Glen Street, Kingston. Council President Alderman, members of the press and public. I'm here tonight to speak about Resolution 85, accepting the donation of Barman Park. In 1946, the city lost Barman Park to Metropolitan Life Insurance, according to Kingston's Magnificent City Parks by Ron Woods. The park was located at a site on Greenkill Avenue where our Metropolitan Life Insurance Company building now stands. The old Barman Brewery, which was in the rear of the park, allowed the city of Kingston to use the land for a softball, baseball field, and a playground during the summer months. In recent years, Metropolitan allowed the city use of the parcels for $1 a year. Barman Park is number two on the map in the city's 2018 Parks and Programs Report, and described as a pocket park, which has a playground with a basketball park, a court, excuse me, and youth athletic field. The city has maintained the spur along Greenkill Avenue and South Clinton for years, as well as the playground. My hope is that this real estate transaction does not jeopardize the Metropolitan Not-Hole League, which plays at this ball field every year. It's a free, non-sanctioned baseball league for girls and boys from five to thirteen years old, and it's dedicated to helping children learn the fundamentals of baseball, good sportsmanship, and how to be a good team player. Often, these children would be left behind because they can't afford to join other league teams. This league maintains a Facebook page and sponsors car washes throughout the year, participates in the city's Children's Day Parade, and holds an awards picnic in August. The league is completely managed by volunteers. All funds they collect go to the league for the kids. According to recent postings, they've been signing up players since March. They've coordinated a field cleaning last Saturday, and depending on how your vote goes this evening, let's not disappoint the children. Your vote will determine their future. So if you decide to refer this resolution back to committee, I would hope that this league would still be allowed to have their games there. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council at this time that hasn't signed up at the podium? Please.
Cassandra Burke, 117 Rendow Drive. I wanted to talk about Resolution 86. I just have a few concerns. The procedures themselves for reducing service by a substantial amount look good, but I'm concerned that you're setting the bar really high at twenty-five percent. The way that the resolution reads, you could reduce service as much as twenty-four percent without having a public hearing, without having the public engagement process. Setting the bar at twenty-five percent, you know, is concerning because you could reduce service by quite a bit without those procedures being implemented. It was also, I wasn't at the committee meeting, but it was reported to me secondhand that the procedures were not on the agenda for that committee meeting, and at the committee meeting, it was said that there was no legislation being proposed at that time, and that between then and now, the resolution has come to counsel. I don't, this is, that doesn't sound like a process that promotes engagement in the public and allows for the public to, you know, provide comment. I also, so I don't know. I don't know, I know you guys don't talk back, so I don't know how you're going to answer that question for me about reducing service substantially without having the public process. I also did have a question about Resolution 87. The substance abuse policy looks great, and it says it applies to all CSEA collective bargaining members. I'm curious whether that includes the police department. That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one else, I'm going to declare this portion of the council meeting closed. We now move to Claims and Communications. Here ain't no discussion, they'll be on file in the clerk's office, anyone wishes to check them out? Can I get a motion to dispense with the second reading of the general bills and pay same? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is adopted, eight zero. We now move to Report of Committees. Resolution number eighty-five.
Resolution number eighty-five of 2018, resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing acceptance of the donation of MetLife Park, also known as Barman Park, by Prospect and Green LLC to the city of Kingston.
On the question?
Mr. President.
Alderman Davis and Alderman O'Reilly.
We had a good conversation yesterday about this matter. I thought we were going to receive some additional information from Mr. Tui sometime today, which we did not receive. I went past there today, and after my track practice, and kids were out practicing on the field, and I got out, I walked around, I surveyed the fence. My only concern is this reads here that we must replace this existing chain-link fence as a memorizing part of this transaction. To me, it just feels that this party wants to donate this to us, but then it's going to dictate the terms on which we need to take this. This fence did not look like it needed at this time to be replaced. And again, from this language here, it says, "The city of Kingston replaces and maintains fence separating two portions of property," which the fence, the Little League fence already has its own fence around it. And then is there another higher chain-link fence that runs around the Metropolitan Life My only concern, and again, Mr. Tui talked about, you know, how it would help us save some pain, some school taxes. I would like this to, you know, if possible, to refer this back so that we can get some more clarification on some of this language in here, and get some other questions answered in regard to, you know, the cost of the chain-link fence. And also, you know, if we don't accept this, what's going to happen to the Metropolitan Not-Hole League, a league that I played in for, you know, five years when I was a little boy? Is the current owner of this property, are they going to now stop the Little League if we don't take this portion over? So again, it's some questions that I would like to have answered, and I'm not sure if this is, you know, what the timeframe of this all is, but I would like the motion that we refer this back to the Finance and Audit Committee.
Okay, so I have a motion to refer back, do I have a second?
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to refer back. On the question, anybody wish to speak to it? Alderman O'Reilly.
Yeah, I think there's some things on this resolution that we're not clear of. I know that some of you have not even seen a description of the property or a map of the property, so you're not truly informed about what piece of property that we're giving here. There's buildings on the property that we weren't sure of, that the maintenance costs would be on this property. There's also some other things, legal things that we need to consider, too. You know, when I drive by there, Tony, it puts a smile on your face to see those kids. Every time I drive by there, I just smile. I just smile every single time, and I'd hate to see that go. So there were some legal issues that came up last night that kind of, you know, piqued my interest in the fact that, once it's turned over to the city, this can now, this can now just be bid by anyone, and that league could maybe lose their baseball field to maybe a soccer group or someone else who bid on that property, or, so that's an issue. The other thing is, another issue came up last night that was a legal issue on this piece of property, was that once you turn it into a park, all sorts of legal things happen. It's turned over to the state, and then, let's say, in twenty years or thirty years, we want to refer this park back, it's no longer something that we're using, we would have to then find, from what I understand, another parcel as big in the city to turn over to the state. So there's all sorts of legal things that happen that I am not sure about. The other thing that concerns me is that why wasn't Mr. Gilfeather there, the head of the Recreation Department, to talk about the cost of maintaining this and just give us an idea of what he had to say? I think there's a lot of questions here that we haven't answered, and I think we need to take another look at this, that's all. I don't want to see the baseball field go away, that's the last thing I'd like to see. And I'd hate for us to be hasty here and that to happen because we didn't take a good look at this and do it the right way. Thank you.
Anyone else on the question? Alderman Scott Childress?
Respect the comments Alderman Davis and O'Reilly have made. However, I see it pretty much the opposite. I think that if we leave this as it is, we run some risks of losing the Not-Hole League because if that's private property, if we're not in some way involved in taking care of it, we have no control in that case. I also think that because of the taxes that we pay to the school system, that if we take it over, we're actually saving the taxpayers of Kingston money. That's money that we can then put back into that field. There's not going to be a huge amount of expense related to that because the contract that we have with the Not-Hole League says that they will take care of the buildings, facilities that are there now, at least with the baseball field. Then, on top of that, because we'll be saving money, we'll be able to, you know, provide upkeep. The fence, there's no deadline that's specifically stated in the contract about when to put up the fence, so we can evaluate that, we can negotiate with the donator, and I don't see that as being a sticking point in this particular case.
Mr. President.
Anyone else? Alderman O'Reilly, second time.
You know, the taxes that we're saving, they go to the school system, which are the children in our community, so those taxes aren't wasted. I know that the way they get funneled into our school system might I know that the way they get funneled into our school system might be, you know, not because it comes through the city, I understand that happens, and, but those taxes go to our own children. So it's not like this is going out, these taxes are going outside the city. You know, a side note on taxes, you know, we don't even know what the present owners would pay in taxes, no one even addressed that. What would they pay in taxes on that property every year? Does anybody know? If, if they did have to pay their taxes, or if they said, "We're going to take that property and we're going to, we're going to do what we will with it." So all these, there's too many questions that we just haven't answered. I think these questions need to be answered, and I don't think the owners would mind us spending another month to do that. They're going to, they're going to take the baseball field away from the kids because we spent a little time to take a look into this. I don't think, I think these are reasonable people, and I think this is a reasonable request, so I think it's the reasonable thing to do.
Anyone else on the question? Alderman Worthington?
Yeah, I just want to, I want to agree with Alderman Davis and Alderman O'Reilly. The park is in my ward, and, too, when I ride by there and see the kids playing, you know, it's a nice sight. I do have questions, I know that majority leader said that maybe the Not Whole League would not be, would not dissipate, but we don't, I don't know. We don't know, those questions were not answered, we don't have any guarantees. I know that oftentimes, these things comes down to dollars and cents and finances, how much the city can save and all that, but I'm not looking at it from that perspective. I'm looking at it as the children in my ward, they have a place to go in the summertime, and they have a place to meet in camaraderie with other children, and we want to keep that league. And I think until some of these questions are answered, I'd have no problem with deferring it back. I don't think that would be a big issue.
Anyone else before I call for the vote? Alderman Shabbett?
I saw my mic here. There we go. I'm not opposed to looking at this a little further. I mean, I'll vote to send it back to committee for further discussion. However, I haven't heard anything, any even rumors about doing away with the ball field. I feel pretty confident, no matter what happens, it's going to stay. And the only thing I'll say, if it's turned over to the city, then we know it's at least going to, it's going to be a park, a ballpark or, you know, a playground. If it's not turned over to the city, it could be sold for some other purpose, and then it'll be completely out of our hands. We don't have anything to say about it, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the question? Alderman Coop?
Mr. President, I've just summarized my feelings on this. This is a gift to the city that we should be very grateful for. Yeah, there's lots of questions, there's always questions on things like this. We'll deal with them one by one. I will vote against sending this back to committee. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. President.
Alderman Davis?
As Mr. Alderman Coop just said, yes, there is, it's a gift, and there's a lot of questions. So what's the haste of not getting these questions answered before we take a vote on this? If the questions come back and the answers are what we all striving for, then we move forward. Again, as Alderman Worthington and O'Reilly says, what's the hastiness? It doesn't say anything that I know of that there has to be a deadline in regard to this. So why not refer it back and get those questions, as Alderman Coop said, get addressed and answered to our satisfaction before we take a vote on this? Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing no one else, I'm going to call for the vote to refer back. All in favor?
Aye.
Raise your hands, please. The motion is adopted to refer back, five three. Thank you very much. We now move on to Resolution number 86.
Resolution number 86 of 2018, Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing the adoption of Kingston City Bus fare increase and service reduction procedures.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, eight zero. We now move to Resolution number 87.
Resolution number 87 of 2018, Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, adopting the updated substance abuse policy.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, eight zero. We now go to Resolution number 88.
Resolution number 88 of 2018, Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, recommending approval for modifications to the 2018 wastewater treatment facility budget.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, eight zero. We now go to Resolution number 89.
Resolution number 89 of 2018, Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, recommending approval for modifications to the 2018 Public Works Budget.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, eight zero. We now move to Resolution number 90.
Resolution number 90 of 2018, Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, recommending approval for modifications to the 2018 City Bus Budget.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, eight zero. We now move to Resolution number 91.
Resolution number 91 of 2018, Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, recommending approval for modifications to the 2018 Sewer Budget.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, eight zero. We now move to Resolution number 92.
Resolution number 92 of 2018, Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing easements required for the Tannery-Brook drainage improvement and recommending approval for modifications to the 2018 Engineering Budget.
On the question? Hearing no debate, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, eight zero. We now move to Resolution number 93.
Resolution number 93 of 2018, Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing a contract for West Brook Lane storm sewer replacement and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all necessary documents.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, eight zero. Now move to Resolution number 94.
Resolution number 94 of 2018, Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing the adoption of a bond ordinance in the sum of $265,000 for the West Brook Lane Storm Sewer Construction Project and authorizing the mayor to execute related documents.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, eight zero. We now move to Resolution number 95.
Long roll. Resolution number 95 of 2018, Bond Ordinance dated May 1st, 2018, An Ordinance Authorizing the Construction, Inspection, and Administration of the West Brook Lane Storm Sewer Project in and for the City of Kingston, Ulster County, New York, at a maximum estimated cost of $265,000, and authorizing the issuance of $265,000 bonds of said city to pay the cost thereof.
Majority needed six votes.
Alderman Coop?
Aye.
Alderman Scott Childress?
Aye.
Alderman Worthington?
Aye.
Alderman Davis?
Yes.
Alderman O'Reilly?
Yes.
Alderman Shabbett?
Yes.
Alderman Shaw? Alderman Ventura-Morale?
Resolution is adopted, eight zero. We now move to Resolution number 96.
Resolution number 96 of 2018, Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, Amending the Fee Schedule Adopted by the Common Council of the City of Kingston.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, eight zero. We now move to Resolution number 96.
97.
97.
Resolution number 97 of 2018, An Ordinance Amending an Ordinance in Relation to Traffic on the Public Streets of the City of Kingston, New York, Adding Handicap Parking on Downstreet.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, eight zero. We now move to Resolution number 98.
Resolution number 98 of 2018, An Ordinance Amending an Ordinance in Relation to Traffic on the Public Streets of the City of Kingston, New York, Repealing Handicap Parking on Pine Grove Avenue.
On the question? Hearing no debate, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, eight zero. We now go to Resolution number 99.
Resolution number 99 of 2018, Memorializing Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, in Support of Immediate State Agency Rulemaking for Tanker Avoidance Zones.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, eight zero. We now go to Resolution number, oh, no, we're finished. We will now go to second reading and vote of Local Law Number Three.
Local Law Number Two.
Well, we're going to do that after. So do the local law, and then we'll come back.
Local Law Three of 2018 of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, Repealing Chapter 160 Bicycles of the Code of the City of Kingston.
On the question? Alderman Scott Childress?
I'm going to vote in favor of this law. I think it's a great idea. It's one of the examples of looking through our city code and seeing something that actually stands in the way of improvement in our city. By reducing this unneeded legislation, we make it more possible for people to have bicycles, ride bicycles through the city, and hopefully, by encouraging more bicycle riding and other forms of transportation like that, will reduce our dependence on automobiles that have gasoline-powered engines and thereby make our community less oil, more, less dependent on oil products. And I think it's a great idea, so I will approve, I will vote for it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing no one else, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The local law is adopted, eight zero. The chair now recognizes Majority Leader Alderman Scott Childress.
Mr. President, I'd like to move that we suspend the rules to vote, in order to vote on adopting the ordinance to replace Local Law Number 390.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any on the question? I'm going to call for the vote to suspend the rules. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Rules are hereby suspended for the action of Local Resolution Number 100. You want to read it one time before we call for a vote?
You want me to read the motion? Is that what I'm going to? Motion to suspend the rules in order to vote on Resolution Number 100, Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, adopting Chapter 390 vehicles and traffic as an ordinance.
Okay, on the question? Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is hereby adopted, eight zero. That concludes the committee reports for this evening. Is there anything before I ask for a motion to adjourn? Yes, Alderman Scott Childress?
I would like to close tonight's meeting in honor of Joan Aylstrom. She is the former spouse of Albert Aylstrom, a well-known minister here in town. She died in a traffic accident this past month. She and her husband have been married for over 50 years. They recently celebrated that milestone anniversary, and I would like to, for everyone here to recognize her contributions to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Well, since you're all here, I just had a question I wanted to ask you guys. Now, what we, I know there's doing a couple clean sweeps happening in the city. What would you think if the Alderman took on a project of doing the, when you come in, Chandler Drive at that area right there? I mean, there's overgrown weeds and shama, you know, not shama, but shumac trees going through, I mean, it really needs some attention there. I think that'd be a good project for us.
As long as it's not on your block.
No, it's not on my block. It's Albany Avenue and 587 or something like that, that interstate. Would you be interested in?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. I mean...
Ward Line is already committed to work.
Does that come up by us at all? That Ward?
No, I don't believe it.
Okay, well, how about anybody else? Am I going to go show up by myself?
I will be out of town.
You'll be out of town? Okay.
I'd love to, but Ward Four is committed to work.
What if we made it the following week? Would that be better for anyone?
Well, what day are you talking about?
Well, they're talking this Saturday, but we could make this Saturday.
That'd be the fifth, you're talking about the 12th.
The clean sweep is the fifth.
That's right, but he's talking about now the 12th.
So you don't want to come before nine, so you can't get that sooner.
I'm available either day, so...
I'm available the following week, the 12th. It's again, I'll be out of town this week.
You travel too much, I can see that. You gotta stay around a little bit. Okay, well, if anybody can do it, just give me a call, or I might have to do this by my own self, but... We're talking about this Saturday?
This Saturday.
Or next Saturday?
The fifth.
The fifth, Cinco de Mayo.
No.
Okay, what about the following? The 12th?
The 12th.
Okay, well, think is better than I can.
Definitely not the 19th.
Okay, so it sounds like the 12th would be good, so...
I definitely can't do this Saturday.
This, no, right.
Next Saturday.
It's possible, right? Okay, so why don't we just...
We're talking about after sunrise, too, right?
What's that?
After sunrise?
After sunrise?
Nine AM.
Yeah.
10 AM.
9 AM sounds like a good time.
10 AM.
10 AM sounds better. That'd be after breakfast, so...
Yeah, after breakfast.
All right, so how about the 12th, 10 AM, mainly just rake, sweep, cut the stuff that doesn't worry? I mean, there's a lot of weeds choking everything, and it's just really...
You're bringing the refreshments, right?
I'll bring the refreshments. Not a problem, okay? 10 o'clock, not this Saturday, the following Saturday. Okay, it's a date. Also, I just want to close the meeting also in memory of Diana Williams. She's a resident of Kingston and town of Ulster. She's the grandmother of the Common Council.